So we will call the June 26, 2018, meeting of the Gloucester City Council to order. First order of business is a flag salute, the moment of silence. Please rise. Councillor Holmgren, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
The first order of business is oral communications.
Oral communications. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. Residents shall be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same and a copy of -- shall be forwarded to the city council. Persons speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each. The council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. Having said all that, is there anyone who wishes to address the council on oral presentation? Yes, sir. Approach the dais and state your name and address, please.
My name is James Cook. I live at 622 Western Avenue in Magnolia. I've got a letter for the mayor and the council that'll go into more detail about what I'd want to just bring up tonight, and I'll go over briefly. For the last 44 years, I've been involved with the city in various committees, working to have problems at the Magnolia landfill, the Gloucester landfill located in Magnolia. I served on my first committee in 1974. I served on the current Magnolia Woods Committee when it was formed. In fact, it was formed because I was here on a oral communication making complaints, the current committee. I've been the constable at the park. I was on the closure committee that determined the use and the plan for the landfill when it was closed. So my background on this is extensive. I just want you to understand that. Some of you people don't know me, but I've been around here dealing with this for many, many years. So in the last few years, there's been some problems up there, as usual. I can just go through, I'd just like to go through a few of them right here now, and I'll start with what I consider to be violations of the state DEP codes for closed landfills. The first thing being trees growing on top of the cap. You're not allowed to have trees growing on top of the cap. We've got sporadic trees all over the place, as well as a grove of trees growing near the parking lot on the cap. It ends up destroying the liner that's underneath if you leave them there. They fall down and punch holes in it. There's problems with erosion. Some of the dirt on top is washing off, exposing the plastic liner. The plastic liner is crucial in keeping the place sealed and preventing water from going in. Wherever the plastic liner is exposed to the elements and the sun, it dries out, it's altered by sunlight, and cracks and breaks, and then leaks. There's erosion on the slopes. There's a pot along the north area near the swamp that's completely washed out and needs attention. There are drainage failures in various places on the slopes, as well as on the roadway going in. These are just, they're in more detail in my letter. A blocked culvert, and this is very crucial in this whole thing, and this has been going on since it was actually capped, and it was never addressed at the time. There's a culvert that runs along the north side of the landfill that carries the brook from Ravenswood Park that is a massive amount of water that travels through there underground and above ground. This culvert was in need of repair when the place was capped. Since that time, it's completely collapsed. Beavers have been building little dams on top of it. It acts as a dam now, and what that has done has raised the water table for that brook that's coming into the landfill out of Ravenswood Park and turned it into a pond. The design for the cap does not account for a raised water table, and it's as high as four feet high in the springtime during runoff. And what that does is it forces the water laterally through the trash, and it picks up leachate and becomes polluted. The purpose of the cap is to prevent leachate, and so far, it's done a pretty good job. But if you're going to bypass it by allowing water to build up on the side and flow through, you've defeated the purpose of the cap. So we have $6.5 million invested in this place. These are some of the things that I found that I think are in violation of the state codes for closed landfill. As far as I know, we've never got a certificate for having that place properly closed, the final approval from the state. There's one other issue, and that's what I brought up when I was here before, and this is years ago, and it still has not been addressed. And that is when we were closing the landfill, we wanted to be able to guarantee that the soil on top where the kids are going to be playing is clean, 100 percent clean. This is an environmental and health issue. And a number, a few years back, the DPW brought in piles of contaminated dirt and dumped them on top of the lift up there, and there's still dirt next to the parking lot that's never even been covered over with a final coat of anything, but should not be on top there. The Board of Health passed a regulation during, before the place was closed that said the standard for dirt had to be twice as clean as the state standard for playground dirt. And there was a testing protocol set up, and it was followed throughout the entire closure, where there was testing done on all the dirt that went in there. And we were able to tell the parents in Gloucester when that was done that we had covered over that mess, sealed it with a solid 23-acre piece of plastic that sealed the bad stuff underneath, and that we put clean, clean dirt on top. And that is not true.
Okay. Sorry, sorry to interrupt, but you've gone way over your three minutes.
I'm sorry. So these are some of the issues. There's more covered in my letter.
Thank you.
I'll leave copies with you now, Mr. President, one for the mayor and one for the council.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in oral communication? Go ahead. Ainsley.
Hi, everybody. Ainsley Smith, 14 Pine Street. Hi, everyone. So to the best of my knowledge at this point, the 2019 fiscal budget has been approved as it was proposed in the packet. The Clean City Commission is still trying to understand all of it. So we found a note on page 32 of the budget packet under the Police Department's budget for the line item "Staffing Beaches on Weekends from Memorial Day through Labor Day" for approximately $150,000. The Clean City Commission would like clarification if this line item is for officers who are focusing on traffic and parking violations, or if they're also able to focus on littering violations while they're at the beaches. And also, we are curious how many officers that funds for each beach. Thanks.
Thank you, Ainsley. Anyone else for oral communication?
Good evening. Richard Lukey. I'm at 837 Washington Street here in Gloucester. I'm here to speak about the 23,000 lights being installed on Main Street, and I have three points to make about that. First is, I have, though I disagree with this whole project, I have to give kudos to your colleague, Councillor Hecht, for the initiative that he and his volunteers have taken to work on the vitality of the downtown. It's a very important value to have a vital downtown. I'm kind of a kindred spirit on that. Before I moved to Gloucester, I was a founding member of the Salem Main Streets Project, which had the same mission. And I understand how difficult it is in an era of suburban shopping centers and big-box stores to restore vitality to small towns and small cities like ours. That said, that's an important value. Getting the downtown really going is an economic engine, but that's one value. There's another value, unfortunately, that it's in conflict with in this project, and that is protect, protection of the dark night sky, which is almost unique to Gloucester. This is one of the last refuges of dark sky in this part of Massachusetts, where you can go in your backyard, and you can see the Milky Way, you can see the stars. And every time we throw more light up into the sky, that value is diminished. So we have two conflicting values. The one I mentioned, the dark sky, fortunately, and the issue of light pollution diminishes it, is protected by a city code. It's section 5-4 of the Code of Ordinances, having to do with outdoor illumination. I think anybody, layperson, who reads the code and then looks at the materials used in this project and the plan to install the lights would say this is out of conformity with the code on at least three points, any one of which would make it illegal. That's not just my opinion. It's also, I have a three-page document signed and stamped by a professional lighting engineer who works on these issues routinely, and that was his consensus, or his evaluation as well. This is unfortunate. So we have two important values in conflict. So what can we do about this? One would be, anybody that, you know, understood this issue could go to a magistrate, and I believe with confidence those lights would be out of here by September. But I don't think we want to go there. You guys have done a lot of work. You wanted to do the right thing. I think that if we conferred as a group and with the city, we could find ways to remediate the worst parts, the most damaging parts of this project. And I was, you know, I don't have, I'm not going to take your time with all the details of this and the issues, because we only have a couple of minutes here, but I was wondering if Councillor Hecht would use your good offices with the city to set up a meeting between myself and my colleagues and the city. Because it is a city project. They own it.
Right. So first of all, thank you very much. You've gone way over your time. Number two, as we said at the beginning, the comments from oral communication will be referred through the office of the mayor to the appropriate agency, or whether that's the city council or not, the mayor will determine that.
All right.
So we won't be negotiating a meeting here tonight.
No, I would just like that meeting to take place.
Okay. So thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in oral communications, please?
I've been at these meetings before, so I prepared a statement. Yeah. My name is Virginia Renahan. I've resided at--
Right into the microphone, just like this.
Like that?
Yes, like that.
My name is Virginia Renahan. I've resided at 56 Grapevine Road for 32 years. I'm here to express my concern about Councillor Hecht's proposal to illuminate Main Street with 4.3 miles of LED lights that do not conform to the existing city outdoor lighting ordinance. They are overly bright, well exceeding the lighting ordinance maximum. They're improperly shielded and unfocused. From a purely scientific perspective, the lighting proposal as it stands poses significant adverse impact to our environment, disrupting ecosystems and wildlife. Light scatter and sky glow cause changes in behaviors from insects to birds to trees where trees won't leaf. Recent studies on sparrows indicate that artificial night lighting weakens their immune system, and actually, they remain infectious with West Nile virus and other infections longer before they die, hence transmitting disease further. Public health, studies have shown that artificial night lighting from LEDs of the type used by this project disrupt melatonin production, that's our human circadian rhythm. Disruption of melatonin is strongly correlated with breast cancer in women. Glare produced from bright, unshielded lights reduce night seeing, particularly among older citizens, and I'm sure you've all felt that when you're driving on the highway and the bright light, white LEDs come at you from the highway. Increased energy consumption and carbon footprint. I submit for your review the American Medical Association's 2016 Report of the Council on Science and Public Health that deals with human and environmental effects of LED community lighting. The report details findings from an increasing body of scientific evidence that implicates exposure to blue-rich white lights, the kind that are used on this project, to increased risks for cancer, diabetes, cardiovascular disease. The report was unanimously accepted by the entire, and supported by the entire AMA. I have copies for you. The AMA report encourages attention to optimal design and engineering features when converting from existing technologies to LED. These include requiring properly shielded outdoor lighting, of which there is none on this project, adaptive controls that can dim or extinguish light at night, and limiting the correlated color temperature, or CCT, that's a measure of lighting. The AMA recommends that it be limited to 3,000 degrees Kelvin or lower. This color temperature is a measure of the spectral content of the light, and the higher the CCT value indicates a greater amount of blue-white light that a fixture emits. And this project, the lights are not anywhere near 3,000. They're in the 12,000 Kelvin range. It's excessively, beyond excessive. I appreciate Councillor Hecht's effort and those of the city volunteers to improve the business climate along Main Street. I appreciate their time and efforts to raise money for the lights toward that effort. Unfortunately, the lighting selection is seriously flawed. From its lumen output to improper shielding, the project is not in conformance with city codes. This light and the electricity used to create it will be wasted by spilling it into the night sky rather than focusing it on objects and areas that people want illuminated. And in closing, I'm in agreement with Mr. Lukey, the previous speaker, regarding the procedural defects in launching the proposed lighting project. There absolutely needs to be more informed discussion and public input, and like other city projects, it should conform to city codes. I hope the council will consider informed public input on this project and make the appropriate lighting changes before the project moves forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for oral communication? Seeing no other volunteers for oral communication, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
The next item is presentations and commendations, and we have a presentation from Carl Ellis on the youth legends' street hockey.
Mr. Ellis, come forward, please.
My name's Carl Ellis. I live over on Fiber Street, Gloucester, Mass. I am the president and founder of Young Legends Street Hockey. It's an honor to speak in front of you guys today. Thank you for even giving us a chance to speak to you. Today, I'm with some of our board members, my parents, future wife, in support today. Young Legends was founded back in 2004. We play out of the State Fort Park basketball court. We've been there. This is our 15th summer. We had a humble beginning of about 30 kids, 14 teams, and a vision of me giving back to the game that gave me quite a bit. As the league has grown in time, we've reached the plateau of about 115 players. We play June through August, about eight regular season games, double elimination playoffs, but we also add in our skill sessions, strength and conditioning workouts, and mini camps. So we've become more of a fun and competitive environment in the city for our players. It's a nice outlet for our hockey players in the city, because rather than staying in the rink all winter, they get out and play, you know, out in the sun, which is, which is nice. Our staff has grown to 20 individuals, some over here, like I said, tonight. We are officially a nonprofit organization with Gloucester as our home. Our future goals are to continue to grow our program, not only here in Gloucester, but also to expand the program out and become more of the hub of street hockey in the North Shore. So with that said, as years have gone by, the State Fort basketball court has become more, it's deteriorating. And on that handout that I gave you on the back, there's some pictures of some of the cracks. So every winter, water gets into those cracks, it fills up, expands, and then we tend to have more concern for injury as far as our players getting their sticks caught inside the cracks, as well as them tripping. And as being hockey players, it's not the most conducive to play on a basketball court, but we may do. So we're looking to, in the infancy of coming to you guys and getting your permission to move forward with this, or trying to find a starting area, with the deteriorating court the way it is, we are looking to potentially, at some point, convert that into a street hockey rink. Our board members have already looked in and talked to vendors like Milik Hockey, Lemonster Deck Hockey, who has facilities in which they design, it's like a synthetic court, if you will. If the basketball court wanted to remain, there's another picture that was actually sent to me by the president of Cape Anne Youth Hockey. That was built in Salem recently, and it includes the actual basketball court within that design, too. So we can always keep it and make it more. My argument to that is that there's so many basketball courts in Gloucester, there really isn't any place to play street hockey. In 2013, our treasurer, Mr. Benchon Cola, who's not here, he actually lives down in Florida now, he created the Cape Anne Street Hockey League, which was for adults, which were high school, college players. They played at the tennis courts at Gloucester High School under the permission of the DPW, and they also played at the Stacy Boulevard. They got some complaints from the tennis community, which is understandable, playing street hockey on a, on tennis courts can cause scuff marks. But then there was the problem of availability. Some people felt like they couldn't play tennis because the league was taking up so much time. So moving forward, with the way the State Fort Park basketball court is and the condition it is, trying to upgrade that and creating a place where not only Young Legends can function out of, but anybody who wants to go down in the community can go and play street hockey, this would be a great location to build on. It's been our home, it's where the league was born out of, so it's true and dear to my heart. And like I said, it's also the part I'm missing out that they've reminded me is that Cape Anne Youth Hockey, the Gloucester High School, Old Bailey Middle School, this could all be an off-ice training facility to them as well, which Young Legends would team up and, like I said, be a big part of the community development of ice hockey players here as well. So thank you so much for the time today. We appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you, Carl. So I'll ask if councillors have any questions for Carl. Councillor Cox.
Not so much a question, but I would encourage you to look at the CPA application. A court rebuild could qualify for this. Maintenance doesn't qualify, but it's Community Preservation Act.
Okay.
And you can find the application and the information under the community development page on the city website.
Okay.
But also, feel free to reach out to me, because I've done plenty of those applications for Bermsfield. So I'd be happy to help.
All right. That's cool. Thank you. Councillor LeBlanc?
So Carl, I appreciate what you do. I think it's awesome. When I was growing up, we had the neighborhood schools. There were little pocket schools in your neighborhood, and us as children used to organize our own street hockey league. So we had about six different teams throughout the city. We went to little convenience stores, and we asked them to buy our shirts. They would buy our shirts. We built our own nets. We, I mean, we had our own rules and everything. So I can understand what you guys are doing, and I'm a hockey nut, even to this day. So I think it's awesome. If you guys need, yeah, I'm just a nut in general, too, so. Reach out. I'm sure all of us at the council will help you what you can do. I think it's great. So if you need anything, you know, I wish I could play with you guys, you know. Anytime you need a substitute, let me know, because I'm still really good.
Anybody, any other questions? Councillor O'Hara?
Thank you. Thank you, Carl. You mentioned expansion. Where do you see yourself going as far as numbers? What kind of numbers do you see now with participants?
Great, great question. So we've plateaued up at around 120 players per team, which was 120 players for eight teams. Right now, we're at six teams, right about 75 players. We're trying to do more research into an inverse relationship between baseball and street hockey. So we try to, you know, make it so the schedules are both compatible, because I'm a big believer, and the rest of the board is, that you really should have the opportunity to play multiple sports to become a better athlete. So this year, we have 75. We had 80 kids signed up. We had a few injuries before the season that wasn't related to us. But we're projecting to keep around that 80 to 100 plateau. The city of Gloucester will always be the home for it, and we've had people from Beverly and Danvers come down and play in our program. We've had kids that have, from Winchester, that have summer homes here that have played. But ideally, we would like to be branching out to maybe Beverly and have a team from Beverly. And again, if we had some sort of facility, I think people would be like, hey, you know, why not one hour a week on Saturday, come down and play in Gloucester? So the other idea is to just have a tournament as well, where we invite teams from the different youth hockey programs. This is kind of off-topic, but in the week of June 25, I'm actually going out to Winchenden, Mass. for the Milik Cup, where they have like 40 to 50 teams from kids from seven to 15 that play. So ideally, we'd love to have like a tournament that was, you know, people from all over came and come down the summer and spend some time in Gloucester, you know? So that's, I, that would be, that's the ambitious goal that we have, but I would say we're five to 10 years from that.
Councillor Gilman, and then back to you.
So I have a quick question, Carl, and thank you. And I love the turnout, really appreciate it. So in all my years, I've lived here for 33 years now, in all my years, I've never seen anyone playing basketball at that court. So my question to you is, are there any basketball leagues that play up there? Or do you also notice that it's not used by any people?
That's a great question. In all the years, when we first started the program, I was worried that I would have to kick people off because I got the permit from the DPW. We've never had an incident of actually having people have to leave on Friday and Saturday nights when our permit is there for. Excuse me. Originally, Joe Belanti out of the Y had a small, I guess, skill sessions up there, if you will, but I haven't seen, we've never had a problem of, you know, telling people you have to leave at this point. So it's mostly just people who come, who have in their cookouts at State Fort and come over, but I don't think there's any leagues, maybe when it first started, but that was a long time ago when I played Little League baseball, so. But I can't say that there are any leagues right now.
Thank you. Councillor O'Hara, did you have another?
Yes, thanks. I know the rink that you're referring to off of Route 2 in Lemonster. It's been there for years. What would be the ideal setup for you? And how many kids from Gloucester participate? And is it open to all children from Gloucester?
So it's open, primarily the league, it consists of all Gloucester individuals. We do have some Rockport individuals as well, because we promote, mostly, we send out flyers every, every spring to the Gloucester schools, third up till eighth, and then the Rockport schools. So predominantly, I would say, I wouldn't quote me on this, but it's about 90 percent Gloucester, maybe 10 percent Rockport. Does that answer your question? Was there more to it?
So it is open to every child of Gloucester?
Of every Gloucester, yeah. What we get is a mix of people who have never played ice hockey.
Sure.
So we get a mix of individuals from, it's $50 for the summer. Like I said, we're not in it to make money. So we open it, we get a lot of kids who can't afford ice hockey in Gloucester, so they come and join us for the summer, which is, which is really cool. And then it's great to see their progress over the course of the summer, but yes, it's open to anybody.
And your picture here depicts the rink off of Route 2 in Lemonster.
That one is actually the one that was built in Salem.
Right, in Salem, understood.
Yeah.
But it has boards.
It has boards.
So what would be your ideal situation? Is that where you would work best, obviously?
Ideally, that would be perfect. The only thing-- Ideally, that would be perfect. The only thing that that doesn't have is we, and again, it all comes down to price, is, is some sort of caging around it to keep our balls in. A lot of our kids can, can blast it, so, um, that would be the only thing that we would add on to it. And, and Lemonster has, you've, you've seen Lemonster, so, um, ideally, we would want something like that as opposed to something that's an open concept. But, like I said, it's for the community, so, you know, we're, we're very flexible.
Terrific. Thank you.
Other questions from councils, comments?
I, I can send you something. I don't have a card on me, but I can send you my email address and contact information, so, cool.
Well, Carl, thank you very much for presenting to us, and, uh, and, uh, thank you for all you've done for the city so far. Um, there's no real process for this, but Counselor, um, LeBlanc and, uh, Cox, um, said that they would be glad to help steer you through how this works, and to, to, so they, they'll do that, and that'd be great.
That's all we can ask for. So, thank you again, guys, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next, uh, item of business, please?
The next item is confirmation of new appointments.
So, uh, Counselor LeBlanc?
Alrighty. We have a new appointment. So the Magnolia Pier Advisory Committee is looking to add Lisa Nogallo to her, to their, um, committee, and ordinance administration voted two in favor, zero opposed, and one was absent, to recommend that the city council appoint Lisa Nogallo to the Magnolia Pier Advisory Committee, term to expire two fourteen twenty-one, and I so move.
Moved to second. Any commentary?
Um, yes. Well, she's a attorney, she moved away for a few years, she's living back in Gloucester, and her roots were in Magnolia, um, and she wants to give back. She said she had a, an appointment this evening, and we voted to, uh, let her waive to, to be here this evening. Um, I went to school at Lisa, Sean knows her, I'm sure Jamie and a bunch of us know who she is, so, um, I didn't think it was a problem, her not being here this evening.
Counselor Nolan?
Yeah, Lisa had to, uh, be at the inferior Cape tonight, down the South Shore, and, um, she's a, a tremendous person and will be a huge asset to the Magnolia Pier Advisory Committee and any other committee that she would be part of, um, full of energy, and I couldn't be happier to have someone with her caliber on such an important matter to me.
Counselor Holmgren?
I fully agree with Counselor LeBlanc and Counselor Nolan. Uh, we are very fortunate indeed to have Lisa on this or any other committee, and, uh, I'm really looking forward to what, um, she is able to help bring forward.
Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. Congratulations, Lisa, and thank you for agreeing to serve. Next item, uh, Madam Clerk.
The next item is the consent agenda and addendum to the mayor's report.
So I want to ask if there's any councils wish to pull any matter off the consent agenda. In addition to the consent agenda in your packet, we have an addendum that Mr. Distino handed out tonight, two other items to add to the consent agenda to be referred to, uh, committee. There. Um, okay. So those, those, what? Well, since the budget is over, I thought you'd be wanting more stuff.
Well, since I'm the only committee meeting next week, where are you?
So, in that case, if there's no, always beloved, then I'll ask for a, um, motion to accept. Moved, seconded, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, next order of business?
The next item is the standing committee report of the Budget and Finance Meeting of June twenty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you. Counselor Cox?
I'm just so excited about having, um, more added to my next Thursday meeting. Thank you, Jim. All right. Let's see, we have a few things to do. All right. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council accept a federal grant under Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three A, a Federal Clean Vessel Act grant from the U.S. Department of the Interior passed through the Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries for eleven thousand dollars for the purpose of servicing resident and transient boaters of the city for the disposal of sewage from vessel holding tanks and portable toilets, of which nine thousand is earmarked for the city pump-out boat, and two thousand is earmarked for the purpose of a shoreside pump-out facility at Solomon-Jacob's Park Landing, and I so move.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any?
This is an annual grant for the city's pump-out boat maintenance and the new shoreside pump-out station at, uh, Solomon's Park.
Great. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. Next?
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three A, a planning for housing production grant as part of the Baker-Polito Administration's Housing Choice Initiative for Technical Assistance from the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency, Mass Housing, with a monetary value of fifty thousand dollars. The purpose of this grant is to provide technical assistance to update the city's, City of Gloucester's zoning ordinance in conjunction with the Mass Housing and assist the City of Gloucester with its housing production plan. The local cash, cash match required is equal to ten percent of the value of the consultant service award and is up to seventy, seven thousand five hundred dollars, and I so move.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any explanation?
Uh, the council is accepting this grant for technical assistance with a value of fifty thousand dollars. A consultant for the, to the city will work on Gloucester's housing production plan strategies, will be paid directly through the state. The ten percent grant match will most, mostly be comprised of staff in-kind services, but the FY eighteen department budget does have a remainder to fund the cover, to cover what is necessary for the cash match.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. Next?
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three A, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, MVP, program grant from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand forty-four with a twenty-five percent match, to be comprised of a cash match of twenty-five thousand twenty-six, funds of which will come from the FY nineteen Water Enterprise Budget and twelve thousand seven hundred staff in-kind hours. The purpose of the grant is to study watershed and water supply vulnerability by conducting risk, risk assessment and enumerating management strategies, and I so move.
Second. Moved and seconded. Go ahead.
The MVP or Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant funding will be utilized to look at watershed and water supply, um, resilience, thanks to the Planning Director, with another MVP application is being made for coastal resilience grant for the high school flood mitigation.
Great. Any questions, comments? This is some pretty good free money and good leverage from the city's resources, so great.
At the end of the year, there's, um, numerous grants with money that's left over, and, um, kudos to the, uh, administration's team for going after them. I, seven thousand five hundred isn't a, a lot of money in, in the form of a grant, but it's more than we had yesterday.
Great. Great. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. Next?
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council, under Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three A, accept federal grants in the amount of six hundred and fifty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-seven for the Community Development Block Grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Program Year two thousand eighteen, fiscal year two thousand nineteen, and the Home Grant from the North Shore Home Consortium for Program Year two thousand eighteen, fiscal nineteen, in the amount of ninety-seven thousand one hundred and three, and I so move.
And seconded. Moved and seconded.
Another annual grant that, um, that was applied for, and we received.
Great. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you.
If anybody wants a list of what is being funded, um, it was in our Budget and Finance packet, um, but it, there's numerous programs. Um, wow, that's still me. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Sixty-four, approve payment of prior-year invoices for services rendered during the FY seventeen with FY eighteen general fund, public work, works, facilities, maintenance, budgeted funds which exceed the dollar amounts for open purchase order for a total of seven thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-two cents. Uh, two invoices in question, um, for a total of seven thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-two cents, and I so move.
Second. Moved and seconded. This is invoices lost in somebody's drawer?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We've already chastised the department head, so.
Yes, that's right. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve supplemental appropriation two thousand eighteen SA thirty-three in the amount of thirty thousand dollars from the Highway Force account transferred to the general fund account, as noted, to DPW Public Service Repairs and Maintenance Paving Account, as noted, for the purpose of spring paving, line painting, et cetera, and I so move.
Second. Moved and seconded.
It's for line painting, paving, and et cetera.
Okay, so this is a supplemental, um, appropriation which will have a roll call vote on. Any other questions? Okay, Grace?
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Hecht?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Counselor Lundberg?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
And Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
The motion to approve twenty eighteen SA thirty-three in the amount of thirty thousand passes on a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you very much. Counselor Cox?
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve supplemental appropriation two thousand eighteen SA thirty-four in the amount of ten thousand dollars from the Capital Project Stabilization Fund, Undesigned Fund Balance Account, as noted, to Capital Project Stabilization Fund Site Improvements Account, as noted, for the purpose of the repair of Stacy Boulevard railings, and I so move.
Second. Moved and seconded.
For the purpose of the repair of Stacy Boulevard railing.
Okay, that's pretty self-explanatory. Okay. Again, supplemental appropriation, so, Grace, if you'd call the roll, please.
Okay, Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Hecht?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Counselor Lundberg?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes, for the railings.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
The motion to approve twenty eighteen SA thirty-four in the amount of ten thousand dollars passes on a vote of nine to zero.
And thank you. And Counselor Cox, still to you?
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council, under Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three A, to accept a donation of three hundred and twenty-six dollars from the Awesome Gloucester Foundation for the purpose of a future cemetery preservation project of the city-owned Cemetery Advisory Committee, and I so move.
Second. Moved and seconded. Pretty self-explanatory?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, this is a simple majority. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, thank you. Is that it for the Budget and Finance? Okay, great. Okay, Madam Clerk, next order of business?
The next item is the Standing Committee Report for the Ordinance Is and Administration Meeting of June eighteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Counselor LeBlanc?
We have a couple of items on our agenda tonight. The first is, uh, ordinance and administration voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council permit the withdrawal of Council Order twenty eighteen dash zero three zero, uh, Counselor Holmgren and Nolan, to request that ordinance, administration, and Budget and Finance examine the potential raising of Stage Fort Park non-residential access fees and explore the potential of opening a fund account to, uh, to designate a portion of the fee to ready Stage Fort Park for the four-hundredth anniversary celebration of two thousand twenty-three without prejudice, and I so move.
Second. Moved and seconded. Counselor Holmgren, would you like to speak, or do you want me to?
We received the feedback that it would be better to go through a, a different route to accomplish this, so we are pursuing that.
Okay, good. And this is the way to do it, and it's without prejudice, so if it, the need arises, we can always do that. So, um, simple majority, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. Next?
Next item is ordinance and administration voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council permit the withdrawal of Council Order twenty eighteen dash zero eighteen, Counselor Gilman, Memhard, and O'Hara, uh, for placement of a ballot, of a question of a ballot for a special election to be held in two thousand eighteen, which would state, shall the city adopt the following ordinance, consistent with Mass General Law, Chapter Ninety-four G, Section Three, Subsection A and Subsection Two, non-medical marijuana retailers, as defined in Mass General Law, Chapter Ninety-four G, Section One, shall be limited to one within the City of Gloucester without prejudice, and I so move.
Second. Moved and seconded. Um, same thing, a withdrawal of a previous motion. Counselor Gilman, you want to say anything, or you don't have to? Okay, great, this is a simple majority, all those in favor say aye. It's without prejudice, by the way, just so everybody knows, in case it needs to be brought back. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, thank you. Um, and that is it for us. Okay, great. Next order of business, Van Fore.
The next item of business is the Standing Committee Report of the Planning and Development Standing Committee Meeting of June twentieth, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you.
Counselor Gilman?
Thank you. So my, our first, um, committee recommendation is the Planning and Development Committee voted two in favor, one opposed, under GCO, Chapter Twenty-one, Section Twenty-one dash three, street names, to rename Moon Custer Lane to Midnight Sun Lane, Lot Two-O-Seven, Map Thirty-four, formerly known as Two Twenty-R Magnolia Ave, and I shall move, I so move.
Moved and seconded, okay. Do you want to make any comment about this particular application?
I'll just, I'll say a few things, and then I, I will be the last to speak. Um, so, we received four letters from department staff, and, um, from the police chief, from the city engineering and public works. Um, there were consistent concerns with that would, this name change, which was only changed several years ago, um, would result in changing of maps, GIS, tax records, nine eleven, and also signage. And then the one in favor or support was the assessor's office, and their job is to see if that name isn't already used. And so their vote, um, in affirmation of the change was to show that the name was not used in any other place. Um, so, one of the things that we talked about is that, um, not to put, um, Counselor Nolan on the spot, but, um, Counselor Holmgren suggested that ma, maybe Counsel, um, Counselor Nolan would like to weigh in because it's his ward. And, um, I'd just like to wait for my comments until I hear from my colleagues on this vote.
Okay, just to point out procedurally, um, as we all know, uh, from time to time, uh, requests come to the council to change the names of the streets, and the ordinance provides that we refer that out to the police chief, the fire chief, and so forth. And that's why we got these letters. There's nothing extraordinary about getting the letters, it's just part of the routine. And routinely, they say that they don't want to change it because it'll confuse people, so that's the judgment call. Um, anyway, that's all I wanted to say. So Counselor, any other counselors want to comment on this? Questions? Counselor Nolan, did you have? No pressure. Go ahead, Counselor Gilman.
Wanted to hear from everyone else first. So the reason why, um, I'm going to vote no on this So the reason why I'm going to vote no on this is not because I prefer the name, I actually like the proposed name of Midnight Sun Lane. I told the, the person asking for this name change that I felt that way, and I also appreciated the fact that this gentleman had checked with his abutters and had a abutters support. But my, my no vote on this was only because I was empathetic towards the concerns of the fire chief, public works, and also engineering, and my biggest concern was the safety issue. So every time a name change, all these different elements have to be changed, and it just seemed like it was a lot of work. And, and so, like I said, I, I've, I just felt that I needed to represent that. So I look forward to hearing from my, from my colleagues in terms of their, their view, and, but, but that was my, that was my feeling to vote not in favor.
Councillor Cox.
I don't see a mention of the police chief weighing in. I, I know, I'm assuming he was asked, but...
He, he did not submit a letter, and I believe when someone does not submit a letter, it means that they're, it, it, it's affirmative that they're in support. That they, it's, they did not disagree, so...
Did the fire chief indicate how much work was behind? I've, I've seen these types of requests come through two or three times in a two-year term. So, I mean, we've kind of already set a precedent to having them change. I don't think in my six years, going on seven years, that I've ever, we've ever denied a request. But I, I mean, if we're setting a precedent by allowing them, are they going to come in more frequently, you know?
Um, Council President, may I, may I respond?
Three houses on the home, on the street?
Right now, there's no houses on there. There's a, there's a lot that the owner wishes to build on, but...
Right. May, may I just report from the, Councillor Cox, from the police chief, I mean, from the fire chief, I'm sorry. The fire chief stated in his memo that he doesn't support in general street name changes unless it helps to improve the identification of a location by reducing similar names, sound alikes, or the other name being used for more than one legal way. The chief's memo noted his non-support because this name change was recently to Mooncuster Lane in the last few years, that with each change, it creates an additional risk of confusion, forces emergency personnel to relearn a street change, and forces name changes across all city resources such as maps, GIS, systems, tax records, nine eleven records, and signage. And those were the things that he pointed out in his letter. And also, the, the DPW director said that, you know, he felt that if the council opts to approve this, that the city would not be funding the signage for that change. That was in his letter, so...
How can we not fund it when our street signs are, they're universal, they're, I mean, we're trying to get them to match? So, do we have it under agreement that the homeowner is going to pay for the signs? I mean, if we pass it tonight, we're basically saying we're paying for it because we don't have any other agreement, and we've never asked somebody to pay for it before.
I guess that's a decision we'll have to make as councillors.
Councillor Holmgren.
I, I do remember a few years ago that the council did deny the name change for my way. I think that was on Wheeler's Point, but I'm not sure, that was the only one, and it was my, M-Y, way. I, I don't know what the reason was behind it, and I, I mean, I, I would assume, although we didn't get into this level of detail at the P and D meeting, that the, the man who submitted the request reviewed this with the abutters, and the abutters, again, didn't have a problem, but, but, but we didn't ask him that, so...
Yeah, I, well, oh yes, go ahead.
So, you're taking it on his word that he had that discussion, but there was no certified letters or anything notifying the abutters? I'm, I'm just, I'm thinking that we need to have an overhaul of this process.
We probably do. We, we did, I remember in a, a previous P and D packet, there was something about the abutters having been notified. I'm not sure if it was a certified letter, but it's not in the ordinance? Okay.
Sure, go ahead.
So to Councillor Cox's thought, one of the things that I thought of when I was thinking of this is, you know, when you get a vanity plate for your license plate because you want something that you like, and you pay the state a couple hundred dollars to get a vanity plate? So maybe going forward, that would be something that we can, could consider. So if somebody felt that strongly about changing a name, and they went through the necessary procedures, and if we felt that it was something we could support, maybe a, an extra charge would be that person's ability to pay for the signage and, you know, because it's something special. So this, the city would get back something for that extra training for the fire department that has to learn nine-one-one. But I, I've said enough, and, you know, I, I, I think the rest of you were pretty...
Councillor Cox.
I think that's a lovely idea, and I think you should spearhead that right away.
There you go. So I will say this. Number one, there has to be a good reason to make a change. This applicant came to us, he kind of had a good reason, he liked, he wanted to change the name, but he didn't feel that strongly about it, and, you know, he's not here tonight, and he was quoting the paper saying, if I had known that this was going to be such a big deal, I wouldn't have done it in the first place. So there's no, now there's no good reason to change it. The, our department heads who weighed in against it, you could say, oh, you know, you guys are making a big deal about a little thing, but they weighed in, and I respect what they said, so I'm, I'm going to vote against this myself. Any other comments? It's a simple majority. Ready? Anyone in favor of changing in this motion, which is to rename Mooncuster Lane to Midnight Sun Lane, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye.
Aye.
So it's a can't tell, so let's have a roll call. So this is, so, so a yes is to rename the lane, and a no is to not rename it. So Grace?
Councillor Gilman?
No.
Councillor Hecht?
No.
Councillor Holmgren?
No.
Councillor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councillor Lundberg?
No.
Councillor Memhard?
Yes.
Councillor Nolan?
No.
Yeah, Councillor O'Hara?
No.
Councillor Cox?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to change the name from Mooncuster Lane to Midnight Sun Lane fails on a vote of six to two.
Great, thank you.
Six in favor, two opposed.
Thank you. Councillor Gilman, next order of, next item from your agenda?
Thank you. I, I think the vote was six-three, no?
We had Councillor Cox, LeBlanc, and Memhard objecting.
Let's go.
Okay. So my second order, the Planning and Development Committee voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council confirm the planning director's determination that the redesign of building footprints for Building C and Building F for Gloucester Crossing, as shown on the plan submitted with the application for the modifications dated May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, and entitled Gloucester Crossing Phase Two, issued for minor modification prepared by Land Strategies LLC stamped by Timothy J. Power, dated May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, including the following plan sheets. C one hundred, overall site and overlay plan. C one oh one, layout and materials. C one oh two, grading and drainage plan. C one oh three, open space comparison plan. C one oh four, fire truck turning radius in Gloucester Crossing Building Elevations, date May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, are insubstantial and are approved upon the condition that an engineered stamped plan reflecting only those changes determined to be insubstantial is submitted to the city clerk, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Councillor Gilman, you want to explain what this is all about?
Thank you. So, it's pretty simple. We are confirming that the changes are insub, insubstantial, and these changes are to Phase Two, Building F and Building C. The height actually decreases and the open space increases. Building F is located off the rotary, heading towards Petco. Building C is the extension of the Petco building. These buildings will now be only one story high, and I would just, I think that summarizes the insubstantial determination, but I just also wanted to note that Michelle Harrison is here. She is a special permit project manager for Gloucester Crossing LLC, and Michelle is the one that presented this in case councillors have any questions. Thank you.
All right, so I'll just explain procedurally again. In the special city council permit for Gloucester Crossing, there is a provision that says if the, if the Gloucester Crossing wishes to make any changes in their plan, they have to, that will result in the change in the special permit, they got to come back to the council. It also provides that the, that the planning director, Mr. Catamatory, can first make a determination of whether those changes are quote "insubstantial." That's what the such special permit says. So Greg has reviewed this, and he says they're insubstantial, and that was basically what we said, but as Councillor Gilman pointed out, if Ms. Harrison is here to answer questions, if anybody wishes to learn more about the changes. As Val pointed out, there's a couple of minor building changes and a couple of minor parking space changes, and I think that's pretty much it, so. Anyway, it's up to you guys as to much, how much you want to know about this. Okay, so we've had a motion, and it's been seconded, and this is a, because we're amending the special permit, it will be a roll call. So Grace?
Councillor Gilman?
Yes.
Councillor Hecht?
Yes.
Councillor Holmgren?
Yes.
Councillor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councillor Lundberg?
Yes.
Councillor Memhard?
Yes.
Councillor Nolan?
Yes.
Councillor O'Hara?
Yes.
Councillor Cox?
Yes.
Okay, the motion pass, passes on a vote of nine to zero.
So just as an intro to the second motion, that was for the buildings and the parking space, uh, excuse me, that was, that was for the building, and this next one is for the parking areas and sidewalk network. Same, same concept. So, Councillor Gilman?
Thank you. So the next motion, the Planning and Development Committee voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council confirm the planning director's determination that the minor redesign of the parking areas and sidewalk network for Gloucester Crossing, as shown on the plan submitted with the application for the modifications dated May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, and entitled Gloucester Crossing Phase Two, issued for minor modification prepared by Land Strategies LLC stamped by Timothy J. Power, dated May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, including the following plan sheets. C one hundred, overall site and overlay plan. C one oh one, layout and materials. C one oh two, grading and drainage plan. C one oh three, open space comparison plan. C one oh four, fire truck turning radius in Gloucester Crossing Building Elevations, date May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, are insubstantial and approved upon the condition that an engineered stamped plan reflecting only those changes determined to be insubstantial is submitted to the city clerk, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions on this one? Again, a roll call, remending the special permit.
Councillor Gilman?
Yes.
Councillor Hecht?
Yes.
Councillor Holmgren?
Yes.
Councillor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councillor Lundberg?
Yes.
Councillor Memhard?
Yes.
Councillor Nolan?
Yes.
Councillor O'Hara?
Yes.
Councillor Cox?
Yes.
The motion passes on a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Councillor Gilman, anything else?
That's it, until the public hearing.
Madam Clerk, please call the next order of business.
The next item is public hearing twenty seventeen dash oh five nine, special council permit, twenty seventeen dash oh one two, Schoolhouse Road number two, three, and four, Map two sixty-two, Lots fourteen and thirty-seven, and Gloucester Crossing Road number seven, Map thirty-seven, Lots four and five, for a special permit under the mixed-use overlay district pursuant to GZO Sections five point two-nine, including major project GZO Section five point seven, five point two-nine point ten, and five point eleven point eight.
So this is going to be continued again, but before we do, I think just to go off script a little bit here, Councillor Gilman, do you just want to give a brief description of where we stand? Because we had a site visit, and we learned a few things. Just for everybody's information, not anything substantive, just process.
So, we had a site visit yesterday at Fuller at five, at four-thirty, and it was attended by our Standing Committee, P and D, and also Councillor O'Hara joined us at five, and we had three members of the public, and what we did was, we just walked around and asked questions. A lot of the questions we asked were things that left off in our last conversation last November, and we just asked to see where everything was, from where the drainage is going to be for storms, where the hookups are going to be for sewer, where the entrances are going to be to the site, and where the pedestrian walkway was going to go to Gloucester Crossing. And it was very informative, so it was just very much a question. We did no discussions or deliberations. And I'd just like to mention to the councillors here that tomorrow night at five, here at this auditorium, the Planning Board is going to be having a special meeting for this matter. And at the determination of that, we will be able to, to better understand when this will be coming back to us in P and D. Right now, it's scheduled for the eighteenth of July. So unless anyone has questions, that's basically where we are on this, so...
Right, so the Planning Board, which will, when, once they vote on their recommendations, those will become part of our motion, and they're, they have all the conditions, and that, so that's imminent. Whether they vote tomorrow is not sure, but they're, they're trying to get there. So, anyway, I'm going to open the public hearing and continue it to July tenth, two thousand eighteen. Madam Clerk, next order of business.
The next item is public, public hearing twenty eighteen dash oh one six, local adoption of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts DEP Division of Air Quality Control Policy Noise Regulation, three-ten CMR seven-point-ten, and amend GCO Chapter thirteen noise.
So, again, we'll open the public hearing and continue this matter to our next meeting, July tenth. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
The next item is public hearing twenty eighteen dash oh three one, draft marijuana establishments ordinance to replace existing GZO Section five point two-seven, medical marijuana treatment centers, and medical marijuana cultivation facilities with a new Section six point two-seven marijuana establishments ordinance, amend Section two-point-three use tables, amend Section two-point-three-point-two community services uses, and delete Section five-point-three-one temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana.
Again, we'll open the public hearing and continue it to July tenth, two thousand eighteen, and if all of these matters come before us on that night, we're going to have a big crowd and a long night, so let's hope they get staggered out a little bit. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next item is public hearing twenty eighteen dash oh three two, loan authorization to amend loan order twenty seventeen dash oh oh two, in the amount of one million eight hundred thousand, by increasing it to two million three hundred thousand, to pay costs of Phase One of the Haskell Dam Upgrade Project.
We'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone to speak in favor, on behalf, come forward, on behalf of the administration. Identify, Mr. Durkin, hello, and identify yourself, please.
Good evening, councillors, Larry Durkin.
Good evening, counselors. Larry Durkin, the DPW Environmental Engineer. Good evening. This project is, basically, the state is giving us a five hundred thousand dollar grant. And in order to have enough money in the account so we can process the change order, we've got to increase the appropriation by five hundred thousand.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. Any, don't go too far. Anybody else to speak in favor of this? Anybody to speak in opposition? Any communications? Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Okay. Counselor questions? Anybody have a question for Larry or for John Dunn or Mr. DiStino on what this is all about? Pretty straightforward. We've heard, we've heard the narrative about the Haskell Dam rebuild before, and I think this is just a continuation of that. We all approved it and we're all excited about it. So if there are no counselor questions, then we will close the public hearing and call for the committee report.
Budget and Finance voted...
Yeah, Budget and Finance. That's the committee.
I thought there was an objection already. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council authorize the following loan order. Ordered that the loan order two thousand and seventeen zero zero two Certificate of Vote two thousand and seventeen zero five six of this council approved March twentieth, two thousand and seventeen authorizing the borrowing of one million eight hundred thousand to pay the costs of Phase One of the Haskell Dam Upgrade Project is amended in its entirety to provide as follows. That the City of Gloucester appropriate two million three hundred thousand dollars to pay costs of Phase One of the Haskell Dam Upgrade Project, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter forty-four, Section seven or eight, or pursuant to any other Pretty sure there's a word missing. Pursuant to... Enabling authority, the mayor and any other appropriate official of the city are authorized to apply for, accept, and expend any and all grants or gifts that may be available to the city to pay costs of this project. Any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less shall... Less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount. Further ordered that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under Chapter forty-four A of the General Laws any or all of the bonds authorized by this order and to provide such information and execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board may require for these purposes, and I so move.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Cox?
There's really no further discussion. It's, we're increasing the appropriation to meet the amount of the grant.
Okay. So this is, any other counselor questions, comments? Okay, this is a roll call vote. So Grace?
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Hecht?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Counselor Lundberg?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes, Larry.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
The motion to approve the amendment to loan order twenty seventeen dash oh oh two passes on a vote of nine to zero.
I would like to ask for a reconsideration vote.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So this is a vote for reconsideration. This is, again, one of these timing things. We do this routinely. So for reconsideration, we, for this to move forward in an expeditious manner, we, a no vote is what we're looking for. So it's a roll call.
Counselor Gilman?
No.
Counselor Hecht?
No.
Counselor Holmgren?
No.
Counselor LeBlanc?
No.
Counselor Lundberg?
No.
Counselor Memhard?
No.
Counselor Nolan?
No.
Counselor O'Hara?
No.
Counselor Cox?
No.
The motion to reconsider the approval of the amendment to loan order twenty seventeen dash oh oh two fails on a vote of zero in favor, nine opposed.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business.
The next item is Public Hearing twenty eighteen dash oh three-three The Application of DLM Properties LLC For The Purpose Of The Storage Of Diesel At Twenty-Four Condolin Road Assessors' Map One Ninety-Seven Lot Thirteen Per MGL Chapter One Forty-eight Section thirteen and GCO Chapter Eight Section eight point one License For Storing Inflammables.
Thank you. We will open the public hearing. Ask, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this motion? Not? Anyone speaking, wishing to speak in opposition? Any communications?
There are none.
No communications? Any counselor questions as to the technicalities of this? Seeing none. Close the public hearing and call for the committee report. Counselor Gilman?
On a motion by Counselor Holmgren, seconded by Counselor Gilman, the Planning and Development Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council grant a license under GCO Chapter Eight Fire Prevention and Protection Section eight dash one License For Storing Inflammables MGL Chapter One Forty-eight Section thirteen and five twenty-seven CMR number one For Storage Of Inflammables At Twenty-Four Condolin Road Assessors' Map Assessors' Map One Ninety-Seven Lot Thirteen Owner DLM Properties LLC Specifically To Store Diesel Class sixteen UST For A Total Quantity Of Ten Thousand Gallons And I So Move.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Gilman, do you want to tell us what this is all about?
Yeah, this is pretty simple. And John Favazza was at our meeting, general manager of Eastern Disposal, which was formerly Hiltz Disposal. He requested a license for the storage of the diesel. The tanks will be used in the same capacity in which they were used by Hiltz Disposal. The people involved with testing reached out to the neighboring Butters as well as the fire department. And the committee confirmed that this is just a new license and that the renewal is annual at the cost of a hundred dollars. So it was basically a change in management. So nothing else changed.
Any questions or comments from the mayor of Condolin Road? Okay. Good. And, okay. This is a simple majority. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
The next item is Public Hearing twenty eighteen dash thirty-four amend GCO Chapter twenty-two Traffic And Motor Vehicles Section twenty-two dash two sixty-five Turning Movements Generally As Follows No Left Turn At The End Of Angle Street And At The Intersection Of Washington Street And Western Avenue Effective July twenty-seven, two thousand and eighteen And To Expire October twenty-seven, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing and asking anyone to speak in favor. Anyone in opposition? Any communications?
There are none.
Counselor questions? Close the public hearing. Call for the committee report. Counselor Blaine?
Yes. Ordinance Administration voted three in favor, zero opposed, recommend that the city council amend Gloucester Code of Orange Ordinance Chapter twenty-two Traffic And Motor Vehicles Section twenty-two dash two sixty-five Turning Movements Generally As Follows No Left Turn At The End Of Angle Street And At The Intersection Of Washington Street And Western Avenue Effectively July twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen And To Expire October twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen And I So Move.
Moved and seconded.
So this was brought to, just, you know, Counselor Hecht and I have had a couple conversations to try to move this traffic intersection a little bit smoother. We all know that it's one of the, it's probably the busiest intersection in the city. And it got referred out to Traffic Commission. And the Traffic Commission had recommended that this be applied to a no left-hand turn coming down Angle Street and also from Western Avenue. And, and we suggested that it be a trial period of three months. So we decided to do it after, you know, the fourth and everything else and just try to get a grasp on whether it's going to work. So instead of implementing this and making it a law and then having to change it back if it doesn't work, this is just a trial run to see how it goes. So, you know, basically, that's, that's the gist of things.
Any comments or questions from counselors? Okay, this is a simple majority. So all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. Next, next one. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
The next item is Public Hearing twenty eighteen dash thirty-five amend GCO Chapter twenty-two Traffic And Motor Vehicles Section twenty-two dash two seventy-nine Thirty-Minute Parking By Deleting Western Avenue Northerly Side From Centennial Avenue To Perkins Road And amend Section twenty-two dash two eighty Fifteen-Minute Parking By Adding Western Avenue Northerly Side From Centennial Avenue To Perkins Road.
Open the public hearing. Anyone to speak in favor? Seeing none. Any opposition? Any communications?
There are none.
Any counselor questions as to the technicalities? None. We'll close the public hearing. Call for the committee report. Counselor Blaine?
Ordinance and Administration voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council amend Gloucester Code of Ordinance as Chapter twenty-two Traffic And Motor Vehicles Section twenty-two dash two seventy-nine Thirty-Minute Parking By Deleting Western Avenue Northerly Side From Centennial Avenue To Perkins Road And To Amend Gloucester Co, to amend Section twenty-two dash two eighty Fifteen-Minute Parking By Adding Western Avenue Northerly Side From Centennial Avenue To Perkins Road And I So Move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do you want to, do you have a comment on this one?
So Counselor Cox had reached out to me. She was having lunch inside of Poseidon's one afternoon. And they had recommended that, they wanted the fifteen-minute parking in front of their building. As it stands now, there's thirty-minute parking. There, yeah, there's no signage there to let them know that thirty-minute parking. They still wanted to proceed with the fifteen-minute parking. There's not a lot of seating in there. So there's, you know, it's more of a takeout place than it is to go in and sit down for an hour and have dinner or lunch. But there is seating, so if you want to go there. And they decided that it would be more efficient for them to have people come in and out with the fifteen minutes. And it was voted unanimously by the Traffic Commission and Ordinance and Administration.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this? Sounds like a good plan. So all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next item is Individual Counselors Discussion Including Reports By Appointed Counselors To Committees.
So we have, at least in our agenda, update on the Stageport Park Advisory or in the Magnolia Woods Oversight and Advisory Committee by Counselor Nolan. Do you have anything to report? Great.
And I've got forty-five minutes to do it. So this is going to be fun.
Who says?
So on the, we'll start with the Magnolia Woods Advisory Committee. We did have a meeting last week. It was a very productive meeting. We had outlined some goals and some objectives that we've been working on with the DPW to find out what's going on. The testing on the project as far as the contaminants in the underground water, everything is one hundred percent up to date. It's accurate and it is clean. In fact, it's to the point where we're looking to maybe possibly decrease some of the testing in the timeframe because it's not proven to be necessary. Some of the issues that we're looking to do is to expand the off-season hours and accessibility for people to be able to park in the front parking lot with an added gate to allow possible snowshoeing, winter hiking, cross-country skiing, and to continue to link up the rest of that with a trail system with the Gloucester Trail stewards. So things are looking really well at the Magnolia Woods, as contrary to one may believe. And as far as Stageport Park Advisory Committee, we have a great committee over there. They're always working hard. They have a lot of ideas and they have a lot of goals. The common issue that is becoming more and more apparent is that the harder they work and the more that they do things, the bottom line is there's no money. So it's tough to have an objective of where we want to be for our four-hundredth anniversary without trying to find funds. As all of us know, that grants for recreational areas in a beautiful city such as our own are almost impossible to get because of the amount of points that we have used against us because we are so beautiful. So it's something to think about in the future as we do need to try to find ways of working on raising some money, whether it be through some sort of committee with the mayor's office and parking like Counselor Holmgren and I have spoken about. But the four-hundredth is coming. It's going to be a reality. And Stageport Park does need to be redone. And we could use some money. Thank you.
Thank you for your service on those committees, Counselor Nolan. Next item, Madam Clerk?
The next item is Counselor's Request To The Mayor.
Okay. So we'll start with Counselor Hecht on this end of the dice.
The main thing is while I, we had a kickoff for the light project downtown at five-thirty on Wednesday. I proceeded to go on Thursday morning to my mother's ninetieth birthday party in Chicago for four days. And people just took over, the electricians and Counselor Cox was helping. And I want to thank everybody for the tremendous amount of support that we've had on this project. I want to thank, of course, Ringo Starr. Steve Noble has really stepped up. We've got a couple of guys from Spittle here all week, stonering their time. We've got some other great volunteers. And because I was away, I was not able to coordinate with everyone out there who really wants to help on the part of the project that we're trying to accomplish completion for the block party, which is July fourteenth. And that part of the project is from Pleasant Street to Washington Street. We thought that because the materials came in late, it would be most important to try and get that portion, which is the block party area, done for that block party. So that's the, we're going crazy to try and meet that date. Unfortunately, most of the trees in that portion of the tree project are quite high. And you'd need bucket trucks and people with ladders who are insured and that type of thing to go up there. So unfortunately, it's not as big of a volunteer project as I had hoped, although there will be volunteer opportunities to assist the electricians and people in the bucket trucks. So I want to thank everyone. I also want to let people know that I'm listening and responding to the comments about the light project. We had a very good comment from the president of the Gloucester Astronomy Club. And we had a very good series of discussions relating to the lights going off at eleven PM. I've not talked to the administration about this since I got on the plane and I just got back. But I will be talking to them. They actually made a very serious donation to provide timers that, so the lights would go off at eleven PM, which I think from several aspects, meaning conservation of energy, light, less light pollution, et cetera. It was a very noble and generous thing for the, for them to do to make that kind of contribution. So I want to thank, I want to thank that club. And we will be back with further information. Thanks, everyone, for the support and for volunteering.
Thank you. And thank you for that effort. It's really going to be pretty awesome. Counselor Gilman?
So I have one request and two comments. My request is that I'd like to request to the mayor that the Public Works Department place a dead-end sign at the corner of Woodbury in Mason Square on the signpost. The only signpost that's on the corner of Woodbury and Mason Square. If you'd like, I'll drive there tomorrow and get a number. But thank you. And then the other two things that I wanted to just mention... that I wanted to just mention to counselors is I think everyone here knows it, we have incredible gypsy moth issues right now. Incredible. I took a walk with a constituent in the Klondike Reservoir yesterday, or two days ago, and there's so much noise and so much gnawing of all the trees. And the worst thing is that they're all pooping on you as you're walking. So you actually feel like you're being sprinkled on. Furthermore, Seaside Cemetery, all of the tombstones are completely saturated with caterpillars, and it's just awful. Trees are dying. So what are we going to do? We have a tentative date at the Lanesville Community Center to have Tim Simmons, who's a tree expert, come and talk to us on gypsy moths and their population and dynamics. I've also reached out to Mike Hale to make sure that he is aware, because we don't have a tree warden anymore, and I would not want to have an expert talking about anything that would conflict with the direction that he is taking. So, so anyway, so he will begin the evening of events at 7:00, and you'll be seeing notices. And then I'm just going to merge into a ward meeting on other topics after that. But this topic, we, we really need to get our arms around it from an information standpoint and better understand it. And then I will make sure that I'm clear with what our Public Works Director, what their, what their recommendation is, so there's no conflict there. And I invited him to attend if he wanted to.
When is that meeting?
It's on the 12th of July.
Okay. That's great, because I was there planting geraniums at my grandparents' and parents' grave, and was covered with those little caterpillars. They're all over the place, and they're on every head, hundreds.
They're disgusting.
Yeah. Okay.
And then my final issue is that at today's Council on Aging meeting, we tried something new, and probably going to be doing it every month now, we're going to start meeting in the lunchroom. And we're going to all be eating the normal lunch that all the seniors get, just so we can make sure that what they're receiving is okay. We had an argument today. We thought the chicken salad was a little salty, and some folks were concerned with their blood pressure, but it was kind of interesting. But it was decent. So we'll be doing that. And the only other thing regarding the Council on Aging is that I am on the Anispram Village Players Board, and for the fourth year in a row, we are offering complimentary tickets to dress rehearsal. And so the seniors will be excited about that, and that will be on August 6. It's Monday night. It's a dress rehearsal, and the seniors will be invited to attend at no cost. Unfortunately, this year, we won't have the cater bus, but we do have a van that we're trying to get a driver up and running as a volunteer through drug testing. And, and if that's the case, we can at least get eight people there in one van pool. But we're excited about that, and this has become a great tradition, and Little Mermaid is what we're going to be going forward to, to perform this summer. So I hope to see many of you there. And that's all I have to say. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gilman. Counselor O'Hara?
Thank you. Like to ask the, it was, a question was asked of me during the site walk yesterday about the Vernal Pond at, what was the Vernal Pond at Fuller School? Which, there's actually a YouTube clip, Gloucester Crossing, before and after. And I actually reviewed that, and unfortunately, the Vernal Pond that was there was clear cut. So I'm curious if, if, first of all, if there was any citations issued, and if the developer is going to be restoring the Vernal Pond. To piggyback on that, if the administration could continue to review the special permit, and it's been asked numerous times about the assisted living that was supposed to be delivered at Gloucester Crossing. If they could report back to us as far as what the status is and the penalties involved with that, I would appreciate it. I would have reached out to department heads, if you will, but I'm not going to do that. I feel that the Mayor has sent the email. I ask questions. I, I think if people and the department heads, probably I'm the least known, so I, I walk softly, maybe carry a big stick, and like to keep it to a limit. Also, if the DPW could consider trimming back, we've had a cool season, and the growth on the, on the streets are cutting into bikers and causing cars to cut. So trimming could take place throughout the city. And also on July 23, at the Magnolia Library, the Magnolia Library will be having another Red Cross blood drive from 2:00 to 7:00 PM, and you can make a reservation for an appointment at 1-800-RED-CROSS. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Hara. Counselor Holmgren?
Yes, thank you. I have two things. First, the final Think Gloucester Library Dialogue is on tomorrow, June 27, at 7:00 PM at the Sawyer Free Library. All Gloucester residents are welcome to come and share their ideas and input for the Sawyer Free Library five-year strategic plan. Refreshments and sign-ins start at 6:30 PM, and once all the information is gathered, I will have more information to share. And also, MassSave is offering Energy Star refrigerator rebates for people regardless of income or whether you own or rent. And the high-efficiency refrigerators of today consume far less energy than older models. New Energy Star certified refrigerators are highly efficient, often using less energy than a 60-watt light bulb. So if you would like to replace your old fridge and need more information, you're going to need a special home visit from MassSave. So please visit GloucesterGreen.org or call 978-325-5235 for a no-cost home energy assessment. And you can purchase an Energy Star certified refrigerator after that, and then submit your rebate online or via mail. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Memhard?
I too have two items of note. The first, I'd just like to acknowledge a, a non-voting constituent in Ward 1, who's celebrating a two-week-old birthday this week, and that is Pip, the piping plover chick. This is our surviving one of four with his parents, and he's, he has survived a lot of challenges. But the Conservation Agent, Ken Whitaker, the Animal Advisory Committee, our animal control officers, and a squad of marshal volunteers have done an admirable job providing protection for these wild migratory birds, which will return to our beach if they survive to fly away. And they're getting, two weeks is an important birthday for a piping plover chick, by all accounts. He was taking a bath this morning. It looked like fun. The second item, I'd ask everybody to join me in remembering and thanking Adele Irvin, who passed away over the weekend. Adele was a Manchester resident. She was a World War II veteran. It was celebrated by Jason Groh in his photo exhibit. She was a staunch supporter and benefactor of St. John's Church, of the Sawyer Free Library, of the Cape Town Museum, and many other institutions. She was truly an angel for all that knew her, and she's going to be very, very greatly missed. Thank you.
Well, I guess she, all of what you just said about Adele is true. Counselor Nolan?
I have a couple of announcements. Tomorrow night at 6:00 at the Magnolia Library, we'll be holding a meeting for Englewood and Lake Road residents regarding the betterment process on the private, the paving of private roads. And then at 7:00, again at the Magnolia Library, we'll be having a meeting of the Magnolia Peer Advisory Committee to go over the reports of the survey and what the future holds, and to let Lisa Nogala, Dick Wilson, and Teddy Coste have at it and do their jobs, and figure out the best way to make the situation into a happy swimmin', jumpin', and as Dean Chaffett or Dan Chaffett would like, his annual jump off the pier in his birthday suit. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cox?
How am I supposed to follow that?
No. The image of that is unbelievable.
Good lord. No, no. No one wants to see that. I just want to wish everybody a very happy and safe Fiesta, and 4th of July on the 3rd, it's just still weird. And I especially want to wish very, very good thoughts and luck to the women's sane boat rowers on, on Friday night. Friday night, 4:45, go down to Pavilion and cheer them on. There are actually more women's sane boat rowers than there are men this year. So they definitely need your support.
Sweating, buzzing, blisters.
Not this year. I was in the eliminations, and we got eliminated. So, I know, I know. But we rode hard and had fun, and it was a great group of girls. So I, I have nothing else. Just be safe and practical about Fiesta and the 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor LeBlanc?
All righty. JD, always a pleasure to see you.
Very hard.
Yep. And, and I just want to piggyback on Counselor Cox with a happy and safe Fiesta. I will be participating in a few events. Hopefully, I'll be.
Ravioli eating?
I'm going to, yeah, defend my ravioli eating championship from last year, and I'll be number 15 on Sunday up on the greasy pole, and you'll see me out and about. And, and for our Assistant City Clerk this evening, Grace, you did a great job tonight. So thank you. We look forward to working with you some more.
And that's it for me. Two rounds of applause, pretty good. That's pretty good. And there isn't a city, there isn't another city council in the, in the United States that has a greasy pole walker as a member. So we are really, champ, sorry, champ. So, and again.
Or a sane boat rower.
Insane. Yes. And a sane boat rower. Okay. Yes, thank you, Grace. That was, you did very well tonight, and we appreciate your joining us at the dius. And with that, we'll entertain a motion. Oh, yes, Counselor Nolan?
I did forget one thing with the, the 4th coming up, as in more importantly in Gloucester, the 3rd, the Horribles Parade Committee is looking for donations. They are having a shortfall. They do have a PayPal service on their Facebook page, or you could reach out to Dave Tucker down at Tucker's Family Diner. It's been harder and harder each year to produce the money and funds that it costs to run a, an entertaining parade. So if anybody could help out and reach out, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn? We're adjourned. Thank you.